Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting of March 26, 2019. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? I've got a motion by George Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny Glavine. Carrie.
To the policy agenda, we're removing item 4C, ordinance modifying the requirements for short-term rentals. Removing item 4I, resolution for conditional use for four mausoleum structures. To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5S, resolution authorizing amendment number one to the 2018 one-year action plan and amendment number two to the five-year consolidated plan.
I'm going to call for the question for suspending the rules and then we'll move to accept the agenda as amended. Call for the question to suspend the rules. And now I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. I've got George Lawrence moving to suspend the agenda, to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Kenny Glavine. Is there any discussion? All in favor to accept the agenda as amended? I have all in favor with the exception of Nathan Barrett, who is opposed. And for the record, Felix Skynes is not in council today. With the agenda amended, we will move to the presentation, the presentation agenda. Begin with the mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I asked Frank Brodeur to come up and give us an insurance update, I think that, for your consideration. Frank?
Thank you all. In front of you, you have two documents. One is the presentation of renewal. And we've gone through this with the administration as well as the insurance committee. And just want to point out difference, as y'all remember last July when we were going through the budget meetings, we kind of talked about the state of the market and looking at increases. And in an effort to try to decrease our expenses when it comes to insurance, we looked at the option two with the insurance committee to eliminate the sublimit of excess flood. It's the flood that we have over the NFIP. We have millions of dollars of NFIP policies on different buildings. And one thing to point out is, and we didn't really talk about in the insurance committee, the sublimit is a limit that's within the limit of insurance. And so we have $75 million of coverage for all buildings, and that's the peril, for the peril of wind. And so if we, if we use the entire $75 million of limit of wind, then this $5 million of flood would be, it would already be exhausted. It's a limit within the limit. And so we did that in order to have a decrease of 1.2%. And so instead of an increase of $55,000, we have a decrease of $19,746. I also have in front of y'all, and this came out yesterday, it's state of the market, and it's for different lines of coverage. And one thing that you'll notice in here is a stiffening of flood coverage moving forward in the standard market, and I think that's going to continue. We also, you'll see that the coastal cat perils, which is us on wind, they're looking at a flat to 5.6% increase over the course of the next year. But the concerning item that's in this is London Market is tightening up. And so that's even more concerning, since we have several folks from London that are participating in our program. I plan on, in July, reinsurance treaties are signed in April 1. By July, budget hearings, we'll have a really good idea of how rates are going, if they're increasing or staying flat. So that's my report. I don't know if I could take questions or...
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Frank. Does anybody have any questions for Frank? Or do we want to reserve this until the agenda item? We're going to reserve our questions until the agenda item.
Okay, I'll stay.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
I believe we have a departmental report for Oscar Renda today.
We've completed the surface course of asphalt in all of the area of SXSN. That's the farthest east part of the project, mainly most of the streets to the east of Oak Street. We're continuing moving our way west, prepping streets, getting them ready for surface course of asphalt. We are now with the prepping work at moving our way from east to west. We're past Lee Street onto Nichols Street, just methodically heading west, getting ready for surface course of asphalt. We put down, this month, we put surface course of asphalt down on Fallow Street, Brown and Fountain Streets, north of Division. We have put base course of asphalt on Magnolia from Bradford to Division, Cruces from Bradford to Division, Spanner Lane and Main Street. We're currently working on Main Street. We finished up the sewer yesterday. We're continuing to move forward with the storm drain, and we should be finishing that up within the next week or so. And we've installed, we're kind of right behind those crews with installing rock base and asphalt. We've installed asphalt south of Division, all the way to Tyrone's Barbershop. And we installed base course to the, is it the New Bethel Church right there on Main Street? We stalled rock base up to that point. And we're continuing on building structures, storm drain. We're installing fences in the area, Main Street, Bradford, that whole area. And we have fence crew onsite full-time, removing and replacing fencing. We are completing the drainage on Esther's Boulevard. That is, we should be finished with the drain, installing drain pipe at the end of the week, and then the structures should be finished within the next couple of weeks. We're installing rock base there. Just, and we should be moving the curb machine that's over there. We should be, start installing curb in next week on that street, and it'll be the next street that'll receive base course of asphalt. We are currently installing the eight-by-three box culvert on Benaki, and we're continuing to work on that and the storm drain structures on Benaki. On Monday, we're beginning the work on Forest. Hopefully on Monday, we will also begin work on Walker Street in an area called GRN3 with the drainage. And we began work today on Cruces, north of Bradford, to install in the drainage. So we're now into the area that is called GRN1 and 2, where we've had all the design errors and multiple issues, so, and where they added twice the amount of drainage structures, twice the amount of drainage. So that work will take some time. Not to mention, the way that we were going to do the work has changed because instead of, they, instead of just one line of pipe, one lay of pipe, there's now a double pipe on both sides of the roads. And if you've driven Elder or Walker, you know they're not very wide roads, so that's going to be an undertaking.
Could you explain that again? You double pipe, you stacking pipe, you saying?
No, no, no. Look, I'm going to show you. Even if nobody really understands plans, this is just some lines. Can you turn this thing on for me, please? So, I mean, this whole thing isn't going to fit, but I really just highlighted, like, that's just, this is on just the section of Elder. Elder between Pivette and, Elder between Pivette and Fayard, which, so it's a really short section of street. But you can see, there's, we're top, we were supposed to just tie into an existing storm drain structure over on Pivette, and then put one storm drain structure on that street with one, only one section of pipe. Now, it's just, just in that one section. Now, there's two runs of pipe on each side of the street. I didn't take the time to highlight everything. And then there's eight storm drain structures, every one of these that are highlighted, there's eight storm drain structures. There's three junction, four junction boxes, which is just where the pipe meets together, and there's no grade in it. So it went from one tie-in and one drainage structure to thirteen, no, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve. So it's, in that one small section of street. So there's a, there's a lot of work to be done in that area. But we're moving into that area, and so...
Excuse me, what is the purpose of going from one to twelve or thirteen? That's, that's a lot.
I'm not a, I'm not an engineer. I'm not a...
Are we talking to you? I'm not talking to engineers.
Yeah, I know, sir, but I don't, we don't design the plans.
How much money is that going to cost?
Well, I'm not, I'm not here to get into all that. I'm here to give an update. You want to know technical data like that, ask the program manager, ask somebody else, ask the designers who designed it. I'm just trying to give you an update.
All right, well, you're doing, that's what I'm trying to find out, the update you're giving me.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Tranga.
Anyways, that's about it. Got anything, any questions? Nope, thanks.
We'll move on to the council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Hope that didn't cost us too much money. They come in and ask questions, right?
Ms. Newman?
The only thing, the only thing I'd like to say about the insurance, I thought we met with the insurance man yesterday, Paul Tisdale and myself and Kenny, and I think we worked out a good deal. And I think, I don't know, he explained it to you, he telling us they've been dropping this extra flood insurance all over the United States. So they could pull that from us next year without any problem. So we thought, instead of giving them $75,000 for nothing, we figured we'd make $19,000 off of it. But they are taking that away from everybody, every city, that extra flood insurance. They doing it, the insurance company doing that. So we jumping the gun on them. We're going to take it back this year and save that money, and add $19,000 profit instead of losing $55,000. So I want y'all to support that. That was a good move by our part, I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? Tisdale?
Yeah, just periodically, I bring up the homeless issue again. I know particularly downtown, it's really starting to look good. But what I'm hearing is homeless continue to be an issue down there, panhandling and so forth, that we have, sometimes they're breaking into property, they're staying in the property, they're soiling the property, et cetera. And I know we're trying to get investors down in there. Is there anything we can, we can do, or is there advice to property owners, something they can do just to help us? Because I know we're really looking to develop that area, and this is prime time to get folks in and show them around, so...
Well, you know, as you, since you attend the director's meeting, I think you noted that last week we hit 186 homeless encounters, and that's up about 30 or 40. So you're chief, that's pretty much accurate. So there's some reason, we're going to try and figure out. But again, you know, we're looking for an opportunity, a campus, and to do the assessment and temporary housing, a place that would not only, you know, house them overnight, but during the day, too. And we'll need cooperation from a number of agencies in order to, to make this work. And, you know, have a place where folks who want help and need help can go, and a place for us to assess those ones who are having, you know, issues with society and go somewhere else. But it's high on our list, and a number of agencies are hammering on it, and we hope to make progress soon on that.
Well, I don't think we'll ever solve the issue. I don't think anybody does, but, you know, our hope is that we can manage it better. The other thing is, when you come down I-110 there at Bayview, there's the regular crew, they work in shifts. Now, now, I'm thinking, when I go to DeIverville and I get off over there, I don't see anybody. What are we doing that we need to stop doing, or what can we do?
One person was standing there, and the other one was sitting down. I said, "You can't read that sign?" This was the other day, lunchtime. So I'm, every time I see it, and, and actually on Pivette Street at Division. So we try to address that. One of them did have a license, so I said, "But you can't do that, do it there." So, you know, just like, you know, past, we got to shoo them off every once in a while.
Well, what I'm thinking is, can we revise an ordinance and say you can't be within X feet of an interstate highway or something?
Well, we have, we have a sign there, it says you can't...
Do we, do we find them, or can? I'm tempted to say we need a better judge, but I can't say that.
Okay. With two judges, no weight, that's our philosophy there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'd like to just recognize the Biloxi High School baseball team. They're on a roll, their, the rankings have come out, they're number two in the entire state of Mississippi, and commend the coach that's doing just a tremendous job. I've touted him before, and I can't say enough about him. He does a great job, not just with the baseball players, teaching baseball, but teaching those young men the way of life. Also like to commend John Collins, who works with the elementary schools. He does these outside forestry projects. Recently, we enacted the interlocal agreement with the county to provide some gravel and other material. The Biloxi ROTC came out, helped build the boxes, the raised boxes that these plants go in. And we, it's just an educational piece that we're teaching the elementary kids, you know, about forestry, and it's just a great program as well. And then finally, big event coming in this week, we got the Rappiskeen Golf Tournament, which I believe is big for exposure. We have the Golf Channel with NBC that's also here, that's going to be broadcasting a lot of the, all of the rounds, actually, to millions of households, and it gives a chance for us to highlight Biloxi and the secret coast. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Councilman Barrett?
Just a reminder that we have Award VII, Award VII Community Meeting on April the 9th at 7 o'clock, the new community center in Woolmarket. Are you looking at me? Am I wrong on my date? Okay. April 9th, 7:00 PM. And then, like to give a shout out to Neecase for getting our roads paved on Oak Lawn. It's been a nightmare, nothing like downtown Biloxi, George, but, but it's been a nightmare for the last little while, so they got all that paved, so that's a, a great deal for our area. That's all I have.
Thank you, and Councilman Barrett. And I have no report this afternoon, so we'll move forward to...
Could I ask a question? This is about a report. I'd like to know, Chief Miller, you retired, you're in a suit like that. I said, "You retired?" I mean, what happened? You're in a suit. Did you get married or you retired? Which one is it? Didn't recognize you over there.
That's all.
That will bring us to the public agenda. We have 45 minutes allotted for public comments. In order to give everybody the opportunity to speak, we're going to limit every individual, every individual's time to three minutes. I'm going to begin with my left-hand side, your right-hand side of the room. Is there anybody on your right-hand side that would care to speak? If you would, please come down, sign your name, state your name for the record. And, excuse me, not to interrupt you, and please don't start this time, just of you that, just for those of you that are here to speak about short-term rentals or the mausoleum resolution, those have been tabled until the next meeting, so you absolutely have the right to continue to speak about it if you want to. We just aren't going to be addressing that issue today. But stay and tell us how you feel.
So, Tim York, 1664 Beach Boulevard. I did come to talk about the, the short-term rentals, and I can actually hold it to next week, so I have no issue in doing that, and I'd be delighted to do that. I did come with two requests, though. I came for the short-term rentals, and then my six-year-old daughter said, "Are you going to see the mayor today?" And I said, "Yeah, I will." He said, she goes, "Do you think you could ask him? There's a park I go to all the time that doesn't have a bathroom. Do you think he could put that in there for you?" I said, "I will definitely ask that question." So it's behind the Welcome Center, and back by the, what is that, the municipal building back there? So, and I'll hold my short terms till next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else? And please, again, sign in and state your name for the record, and address, your name
Good afternoon. My name is Jaclyn Wilson. I'm the general manager of Biloxi Beach Resort Rentals. And even though the meeting is tabled until next week, that's fine. I just wanted to ask if maybe on the application where it's talking about, on the short-term rentals, some of the requirements inside of the unit, such as a guest book, and also a copy of the individual's tag of their vehicle. I manage over 220 units between Biloxi and Gulfport. We have a sophisticated software as well as digital locks that can tell you anyone that's been in the unit, their name, address. Also on our DocuSign information, I get their driver's license, a copy of their driver's license. So if we could maybe adjust that to say, a guest book, if it is someone who does like VRBO or Airbnb, or for management companies who have a software where I can print you a report and show you anyone that's been in that unit and all of their pertinent information. So I think that could, you know, to better serve all of us, the individuals who self-manage as well as management companies. Because I, I don't think I could do guest books in every unit. And then also, regarding the conditional use, and y'all making it to where it's everyone, no matter what, they're zoned, I really don't think that's a good idea, because in our market, we also sell real estate. And when you have people coming here to invest in Biloxi, and they have the chance that, hey, we may not be approved to even do short-term rentals, they're not even going to think twice about it. They're not going to put an offer in, they're going to go somewhere else. So we really need to think about that, because we want people to come here, and not only by condos, but beach houses and, you know, those things. But if there's even the slightest chance that they're not going to be approved for a short-term rental, and they're here strictly for investment purposes, they're going to go somewhere else. So we really need to think about that before we turn all of, all of it into conditional use. I think if you're zoned properly, let's go through the proper, you know, certificates, everything that we have to do. And if you're not zoned properly, well then guess what? You don't get to do short-term rentals. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Do I have anybody else on this side of the room? On my right-hand side, your left-hand side of the room, is there anybody that would care to speak? Mr. Stallworth, if you would please, for the record, sign in and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Stallworth at the 79 Bond Street. I realize that you will be taking up some additional conversations on short-term rentals, but I do want to ask you to please consider keeping in the sections where there is a by-right area. Part of the zoning process is that when people come to town, there's a certainty that they can do business in this city without excessive regulations. And if we do that, then we can move forward in a commercial area that is by-right, that would have a tendency to help people move into that area, and I think that's what you really are trying to do. But if it's a conditional use regardless, then for the most part, people will take the, do why worry about commercial zone when I can go to residential zone or some other place if I have to go through a conditional use. Those areas that are already pre-approved give business people the opportunity to move into those areas that they know they have the least, have the least resistance. But if everybody has to go through a conditional use for any area, then I think you totally defeat your purposes. I recognize that there are a lot of concerns about condos and apartments that are in commercial areas. I think those can be handled with an exception clause in those areas where there, you can isolate those problem areas and have them go through a conditional use. But without that, as I told someone, it's likened into that problem of, I got a finger that has a bad infection, so cut off my arm, so that now everything's happening. That's what happens when we try to make everything a conditional use, because now you definitely have taken an axe where you need a scalpel. So I would ask you to do that and consider keeping those areas that are currently zoned commercial as a by-right with the exception of perhaps maybe those areas that have a larger number of units and making those come under conditional use so that people in those areas could have some say. But please, we have to have a area, a area where it is a permitted use by right. So I'm asking the council to please take a look at that. Secondly, you know, I appreciate the area of Bond Street there, but they have a real bad attitude right about now, and I can understand why. I mean, this thing has dragged on so long, and I appreciate your help in getting that. One of the biggest problems we have when we come, when guests come in, is I constantly having to explain to them why they have to walk in mud. So I would ask you to do that. And short-term rentals are coming. They are part of the future. And they are important, because they do pay taxes. We pay it, we work through it, and for small business people like myself that won't have the capacity to build a 40-story hotel, it still provides me with an opportunity to come in and expand that. I want to do more in the city of Biloxi. Give me an opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stallworth. Do I have anybody else on this side of the room that would care to speak? Reverend, if you would please come up, state your name and address for the record and
All right. I am back. It's me, REV, and I just want to touch on a couple of subjects real quick, and I'm going to get out of your way. Mayor had brought, there were some issues brought up about the homeless people by Mr. Tisdale there. I think that the town should look on Oak Street in Biloxi with all those old warehouses down there, to maybe establishing a place where we could shelter the homeless people down there. I see them on downtown Biloxi. I'm irritated with them. They stand in front of McDonald's every morning, waiting for their handout for their breakfast, and I'm just tired of, I know where Mr. Tisdale's coming from. Also, I just want to state one more thing, and I'm going to get out of your way. The long-term, the short-term rentals here in Biloxi, I think the people of Biloxi should have a chance to have short-term rentals. When I go to Florida, I rent short-term rentals. And, Mr. Glavine, nothing to you, but you had mentioned in one of the city council member, meetings that are there, that you voted against short-term rentals here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. You're involved with the Hotel Association. You just abstained from that vote and, and let the city council take care of it. I think that there's too much collaboration going on between the hotels and, and, and short-term rentals. People want a private place to stay. They don't want to stay in hotels, some people, and I commend the city of Biloxi for all the hotel they're building down here right now to accommodate people. But there is people that would like to have a place to go, separate from hotels. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rev. Thank you, Rev. Is there anybody else who cares to speak? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
I have no clue what I'm going to say. My name is Vincent Creel. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the city of Biloxi, but I'm also on the board of the Salvation Army. And since the homeless issue has come up more than once today, I wanted to mention to you that on Monday at 10:00 in the morning at the Visitor Center, the Salvation Army of the Gulf Coast is going to be announcing a new program. And the new program is called the Help Card. And what the Help Card is going to be, it's going to be the size of a business card. And what the Salvation Army wants to do is they want people to give, if they're approached by a panhandler. And there are panhandlers and there are homeless people. There's a difference. So, what they want to, to give people is this card. And this card is called a Help Card because on the reverse of that card, when you are asked for money for a meal, when you are asked, "Where can I find a bus ticket? Where can I find clothing?", on the back of that card is going to be the address to Loaves and Fishes, the address to St. Vincent de Paul, the address to the Soup Kitchen in Ocean Springs, and the Salvation Army Center in Gulfport. And I think they even involve the Ibriville. They're not telling people not to give panhandlers money, but they are saying, "Here is something that we hope you could consider instead of giving a panhandler money. If they want food, this tells them where to get food." So, since that subject has come up more than once, I know the mayor has grappled with it in different ways to help, help solve this problem, which is the mayor has said rightfully that there are no simple answers and there are no cheap answers. But this one, the Salvation Army, has found very effective. They had the same issue in Waco, Texas. And what they have found is sometimes if you take money out of the equation, things change a little bit. In all the years that they did the Help Card in Waco, Texas, and in Waco, they called it the Hunger Card, they gave away thousands of these cards. They had one card turned in at a soup kitchen. So, you, that's one of the things that they are going to talk about on Monday is, "Here's what we suggest you do. We're not telling you not to give money, but we are saying, make it a thoughtful gesture." And they have studies, they have research, they have everything that shows who the typical panhandler is. They're trying to do it in a thoughtful manner, but it is another step. And it's a step not coming from the city, it's coming from a group like the Salvation Army, working as the mayor has said, having them all work together, which is what this will be. Essentially, it's a referral card. It has no value. Where do you get the card? It's going to be sitting on counters at different restaurants and different other high-profile locations throughout the city. And if people want to use it, they can use it. It's just something they're going to have in their pocket when they're approached. Give them a card if you like. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Before we move on to the next section, I would...
I'd just like an opportunity. I know Councilman Lawrence has responded to persons or made comments during this area, section. I'd like to make one comment of clarity, if I would. On, on the issue about my voting record on, on whatever issues and coming under question, I'd like the record to reflect that I have voted both for and I've voted, voted both against short-term rental applications depending on the test that they, they're meeting based on what I believe is in the best interest of the citizens of Biloxi that have elected me. And those include things like if they're in a multi, multi-zoned area. Usually, we look at the surrounding area to see if there is commercial businesses or if there's residential business, or residential heavily populated. And furthermore, we look at the input that we get from these meetings, and if there's a lot of the residents that are in that area that object to it, that carries weight. If there's residents that do not object to it, the short-term rental application, that carries some weight. So, I, irregardless of my position in the hospitality industry, I also represent that section of the hospitality industry, which is short-term rentals. That's a lodging entity. And I, and in my position of president of the Hotel and Lodging Association, I represent any lodging establishment. So, I just wanted to get that in the record in this section, and I appreciate you allowing me a couple of minutes. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask or charge either one of you, Jerry Creel or Chief Miller, to give us a report next week with regards to the licensing, licensing of panhandlers. I know we passed an ordinance sometime ago, and I want to know what impact it's had, how many people have, have signed up and are licensed. So, if you could address that issue following meetings. Thank you, Chief. We will move on to Section 4, Policy Agenda, Ordinance A.
Ordinance amending Section 2242, Use of Public Sewer Relating to Sewage Disposal.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
It's moved by Kenny Glavine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by George Lawrence. Discussion, Mr. Glavine?
First reading.
Oh, first reading. Then I guess you won't have any discussion. We'll go to B.
Ordinance amending Chapter 17 Streets and Sidewalks and Adopting Regulations for Small Cell Technology Facilities.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Paul Tisdale. Do I have a second? Second by George Lawrence. First reading again, we'll move to ordinance, excuse me, yeah, Ordinance C. Well, that's removed, so we'll move to that at another date. We will move to the second reading of Ordinance D.
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance specifically the addition of a new overlay district to be known as Downtown Howard Avenue CRO District.
Who, who moved this? Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence, you have first shot of discussion.
Yeah, I do. I just, I know that y'all had a lot of questions. I was just going, I remember we discussed the Wi-Fi. What is that, did we decide we're going to do it to Wi-Fi? That's J in that, in the article. Because I, I think Dixon mentioned that not everybody needs Wi-Fi. Do they have to have Wi-Fi? They don't?
I think we just said it would be, they were encouraged to provide access to that, and they should provide it to commercial and residential units as far as having it available.
So, they have to have something there for them? That's what I'm trying to find out. Are we forcing them to have that or not? Say it again.
When you just, you just mentioned urging them. And so, the word urge, just like the word sure.
Encouraged.
Well, encourage or should, which are all used to indicate probabilities. And so, when I look through this, and it comes down to the determination of a certain group of people to make a subjective determination based off all of these encouragements or probabilities that they may or may not, or might not be required to. I'm confused on what's required and how that plays in some scoring system determined if this group that's going to determine based off some subjective standard, if they're going to get approved for it. So, if they do have this type of awning, or if they don't have this 5G thing, or if they don't have this, well, they just should have it, but that doesn't mean, mean they have to have it.
Robert.
So, they'll pass. But if they don't have this, then they won't pass. And I don't have a, I don't have a clear matrices of, of how I can determine if someone, what I, what's expected of me if I'm a developer.
Okay. We had this conversation, and we were awaiting some white paper that we talked about in the last meeting. I think this has been tabled, and then I would expect a meeting to bring those notes, you know, encouragement versus requirement. I think that's the issue. What is our intent with this downtown overlay district is to make it attractive, attract not so much from a historical standpoint, but, you know, an entertainment and, you know, a happening place. And if it takes removing some of those things in your mind that have, you know, undue, you gotta do these kinds of things, we need to know about it, and we need to do, know about it before we put it on. But in writing, I would encourage us three to get together, whoever else has issues about that.
I think we talked, we talked about that, and we will. Then let's table this because there is a lot in here that...
But like I said, once anybody has any, any problems with this language, then we're going to go forward. I mean, now's not the time. We should be talking about this over the last several days. And I have no problem, you know, with the intent of doing and streamlining, but, you know, our developers, they, some of the things that we encourage, they're going to do it anyhow. But we, I appreciate your point where, you know, we're not making these people do it, but just through the course of today, you're going to provide these things, and that's what we want.
Right. In my understanding, the issue that I have in where I talked with Peter is like, in four years, none of us may be here. So, when we just use the term attractive, what's attractive to us and what's intended by us may not be intended or attracted to the next people that are sitting in your seat or our seats.
Well, you know, is it worth noting as a suggestion versus a requirement? And that's, I think we need to nail all these things down, the questions that the council may have and what this ordinance means. We're trying to streamline this thing, we're trying to kick it in gear. Like you said, time goes by fast, and that's what, that's what I would like in the next, before this comes up again, that we're in sync about any questions or, you know, conditions you may seem, it may seem to be, you know, too restrictive, let's know about it. But, you know, let's do that, and then we'll bring it up again.
Well, I'll move to table this.
I'll second.
Subject call, I got a second.
Still discussion?
Continue with discussion.
This is a little deja vu. I think we talked about this, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and if anybody, I think you invited us and encouraged us. If you have any thoughts, send them to us. And I know the music thing was a concern. Boom, that's gone. Something else was gone. We changed this to that. It sounds like some of the council still needs some more thought. I'm thinking, I was comfortable with that. I didn't send you anything because I'm good with what you have. That's where I am on the situation. But your point is, here we are, we, we want to put this overlay in place to streamline the process, but we're still kicking it around on the front end. We gotta get...
It's only a few weeks, but, you know, we should be able to accomplish, accomplish this in a few weeks, too.
But this also plays into, I think, this, this district we have established, working through, is it MDA for all this development and some of these things? There's a timeline, right? The calendar's running, they're supposed to be...
2021, I believe, is, is the target. So, we gotta be turning the lights on in 2021.
So, if we were, if we're going to tweak something or do something, if we're not going to do it today, it's got to be done next Tuesday. We gotta get going on this. Okay? Thank you.
With regard to this MDA calendar, what is the timeline deadline?
2021, these people need to be in, in, in operation in order to get that, that amount of funding that is significant. So, that, those are the conditions. Now, if something happens where we have to extend it, we need to know as fast as we can to extend that. But right now, the clock is ticking. 2021, we need to be in business. Is that not right, Lee?
Well, we should set a meeting for us to all communicate on this. So, I get what Paul is saying, but we didn't receive this until this was published on Friday or Thursday or Friday. So, it's not a lot of time to, to create a dialogue over things that are going to affect the future of our city. And so, I have no problem establishing a meeting or a workshop where we all can meet here and discuss this. If you'd like to get together privately and look over my notes and the other councilman's notes?
First three get in free, that's fine, too. I mean, we just need to have the language in front of it as it sits right now and pencil in what, what suggestions you think we need to have, and we need to do that rapidly. And I don't mind doing it two at a time, and our emailing, the white papers.
I'd just like to, I see Mr. Young's in the audience. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at any of this or any of the revisions and I, but if, if you have looked at it, the question I have, are we ready to go forward with something like this, and are you comfortable with it? You're ready to go forward with it as it sits right now? Okay. That's, that's important. I'd just like to tell my colleagues, that's important. The developer has stated that he's comfortable to go far. We can always modify, change things if they're cumbersome or we find that they're getting in the way. But in my business, time is very, very important.
I understand that, Kenny, and I respect that for you, but doing it right the first time is the best thing to do. That's all. I'm not against anything anybody doing. I want to make sure we're all going to set up these roofs, upgrade downtown. Everybody wants to be successful. We all for that. And somebody thinks, "I don't want to stick something on somebody and force them to do something." It's not really viable for this downtown location. That's, that's my thing. Well, that was the work, that was the reason why we had the workshop. Now, let's get to the specific language. If you have specific details or anyone on the council have, give it to us, and we'll, you know, revise it accordingly. We're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to make things difficult, we're trying to make things easy.
When I get back to the office tonight, I'll share it with the council, the notes that I've already written on this, and I'll share it with Mr. Abide as well. Mr. Creel?
One of the things we're trying to do with the, with the suggestion here, that Wi-Fi being made available, if you'll, if you'll look, it says, "Fiber optic connections capable of ISP connections for high-speed broadband." What we're trying to do is to make sure that the infrastructure goes in while they're renovating these buildings, while they have the sidewalks torn up, so that after they get through, we don't have to come back and tear sidewalks up later. That's what we're trying to achieve with this. And Wi-Fi is almost a no-brainer. Almost everyone provides that now. So, this, this is not some burden that we're putting on developers. If they want to attract people to their business, most of them are already putting into Wi-Fi capability. But this will help us, too, down the road because after we get through with Howard Avenue, for example, we don't want developers having to come back after the fact and tear up our sidewalks to go back and put the infrastructure in. We're already requiring this in subdivisions. We're having them put in the conduit to accommodate the high-speed internet and other things. So, this is, this is not something I, I feel like is a, is a deal breaker or an undue burden on anybody. It's something that is just part of keeping up with technology.
Let me ask you a question. Which sidewalks are tore up, they finished?
I'm sorry?
Which sidewalks are tore up downtown, they all finished?
Well, they all finished right now.
So, you're going to tear them up again, you say?
As these buildings are renovated, though, it, there may be the need to take up a sidewalk again to put something else in there.
And new buildings.
And that happens all the time. Also, like the mayor says, if we put a new building in downtown, you know, there's going to have to be connections made to whatever utilities are already in the ground.
A new building, totally different than what we have already there. New building, totally different game completely. You've got empty lots, you can do what you want on them.
You still have to tie into the infrastructure, yeah.
There's a motion on the table. There's a motion to table this until, let's set a date for it instead of subject call. What's our calendar look like for the next meeting?
April 2nd.
April 7th.
April 7th?
April 2nd.
2nd? How was the motion on the table is to, to table this until April 2nd. There's a motion by Councilman Deming, a second by George Lawrence. Call for the question.
You're going to set a time, 2nd, 4 o'clock, 4:30, something like that?
Well, it's, this is just going to be set for the meeting.
You have to say it for the workshop or something.
We've done, we're just going to, right, we'll, we'll communicate what we think is, is appropriate and discuss it with, with Peter and the administration. So, that way we can come to some conclusive language. All in favor? All opposed against? Yes, it fails. The motion fails. The resolution is still on the table. Is there any more discussion on this resolution? Well, I'm going to make some discussion. And, and the issue is, you know, with Mr. Young's development, we've all seen that. We all like that, we approve that. This should go, I mean, his development should continue to move forward. And in the essence of providing some protection so that, that the vision for the district, is what it's tentatively called, isn't destroyed by some future development, I think this doesn't accomplish that because this thing is filled with, with those terms like should and encourage, and there's nothing in here. It, it comes down to a few people that get to say, "Well, we said you should do this, and 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 you should do this. But we're going to, but you didn't do the things that we encouraged, so we're going to deny your development." There's no, there's no real black letter rules in here other than high speed or, or you have to put the, the sidewalks back to the way that they looked. Everything else is encouraged. that they looked, everything else is encouraged, and, and a lot of other things are so arbitrary that it's based off of the subjective opinions of those that are, are ordained to be the determinators of who gets to develop and what they get to develop, for example, the height, if you wanna build a building that adds something else onto it, you don't just have to provide the plans, you have to give a detailed synopsis, basically, of the need for that additional development, why, wouldn't a developer's plans, like Mr. Young's, that come in, that build a bar, a rooftop bar, that adds on to the development downtown to improve his business model, shouldn't that be enough for us, but it's not, in this, it's required that they come in and demonstrate their need for it, I, I just, I find this absurd and constraining, and I think if we're gonna do something to create a district, it should be far less subjective and more objective, that's really the way it should be, if we have to take another week or two weeks to do this, then let's do it right, Mr. Young's development, there's a way, we need to let his development start, I don't know if this is the only thing that prevents his development, can we pass something, we've approved his plans, correct?
Let, let me throw a scenario out, okay, if you, this is gonna come up for a vote, yes or no, right? And if it ties, it's a no.
Yeah, so, that's what I was gonna say, if you put the motion back on the table, I'll vote to, with you guys, just so that we don't risk this measure failing on a 3-3 vote, so put it back on the table, and we just, everybody get everything that they're opposed to in, and so that we can do it next week.
If you do pass this today, and what's to stop amendment of that motion, or this district, based on specifics?
Well, there's, well, let's, nothing, right, except time, because it's an ordinance change, then it has to go through the entire process of tech change and the ordinances, and that, that's more of a process, if we just do it right now, we don't have to go through that process every time we want to amend one area of this as we progress, I will, I will.
I have, also, just so that we don't risk this next week as well, we're gonna have a councilman out, we're gonna be 3-3, so we might wanna push it a little bit further, just to make sure, I mean, whatever we have to do, I just don't want us to, to be in the same situation next week with six people here and have a 3-3 vote.
Well, you know, again, everyone was provided this early on, and, and you know, those specifics that you hit questions for, you know, we could've done this, you know, today, and addressed any of those things that are arbitrary, you know, in your mind, and that need to be, that are counterproductive to what we're trying to do, you know, we paved Howard Avenue, we're ready to rock and roll, and because we paved Howard Avenue, got rid of some of those things that happened in 80, we're ready to go, and it's, it's intense now, and we really, every minute counts, so what, what I'm, you know, Nathan, I appreciate what you're, what you're saying, but you know, it's, it's a, the second or never, okay, and, and I think that, that's a, it's a big issue in my mind, because we can move forward with what we have in, in certain ways, but you know, to do the right thing for that, for this development, the re, rebirth of Howard Avenue and that whole district is important, and so, you know, if you wanna pass it here.
He's comfortable, his answer was yes, this council and this, our mayor, we, we want nothing more than a thriving downtown Biloxi, and, you know, regardless if, if we find something that we have to put in stone, or, or change, or whatever, we have the ability to do that, we are the city council, if we find something in this ordinance, we can, we can come back and make a proposal, or go through that process and do that, but let's not, let's clear the path for him to go, I'm sure there's, there's timelines for him, he'd like to go, and people that he's negotiating with, to, to make this happen, and one day can blow a deal, and let's move it forward, and I'm telling you, the, the optimism of the council and the mayor, and future city councils, whoever takes, you know, whoever may replace us, are, is going to do the same thing, they're gonna be doing the same, the positive things for Biloxi, so, I would encourage us, hey, let's, let's move it forward, it's a, that's a, that's big news, that's positive news, we're not getting stuck in quicksand, we're moving forward, there's nothing at the next council member, meeting, that if we, if there's something that needs to be corrected, we can do it together, we can do that.
My biggest problem with this whole thing is, you're taking it out of the council's hand when you give it to some board, I have a problem with that, we're elected officials just like the mayor, to represent the city, and I have no problem moving forward, but I can move forward with the right things in place, that's the name of the game to me, if you're gonna change anything, it don't get to take much to change some of the things like, Fofa even said that, if you think need to be adjusted, just adjust them, let them know, put the, put the thing on the table the right way the first time, that's all.
All right, well, I'll renew my motion to table it until April 2nd, do I have a second?
Say it again.
I have a second by Dixie Newman, I just renewed the motion, any discussion?
I'll vote with you guys, just to avoid this, this failing today.
Call for the question, all in favor?
You're in discussion still?
Correct.
Let's go back, we started this five weeks ago, we had a workshop, we talked about it, said get any suggestions you have, suggestions were submitted, some of those were made, we're back again, now we have, well, I have some more suggestions I'd like to make, in order to get this show on the road, I'm afraid it doesn't look like it's gonna happen today, but in order to get this show on the road, there's no reason why we couldn't approve this today, work inconco- concurrently, as this is moving forward, so that man can get started on his project, since we're on a tight timeline here, and we can go back and shape this over the next month, for that matter, am I accurate in that, Mr. Abide? Is there anything that prohibits us from doing that, is there anything that puts us in jeopardy with whatever, whatever programs the developer is, is taking advantage of at the state level, do we run afoul, or do anything that disqualifies his project from MDA or whoever that's providing some of this?
I mean, we've also got the, the requests they're making to have this area declared an entertainment district, which will help them on some, some tax breaks with the state, so, I know he wants to submit that to MDA, but I think on the, the clientele he's got, and the people coming in to look, I mean, people have been coming in, and I, I think it's, if there's a small tweak to be made, then, and, and I still kind of, I mean, the AHRC was already controlling this process and doing all this, and we're trying to streamline the process, and when you talk about what's encouraged and what's required, you've got seven people on that board that are not really, some don't even have an architectural background, and they can make decisions, and then it has to go through, and it can be appealed to the council, this committee here, if somebody doesn't like the decision that this overlay committee would make, it still would be, could come back and be appealed to the council, or if a citizen didn't like what the developer was doing, they could appeal that to the council, so the council still is gonna have review and say-so in this.
The other, the other point I wanna make is, in talking about the downtown that I mentioned during council comments and everything, is that here we are trying to establish some certainty, which is what the market wants, in order to get investments in, investors in here, and if this is the time to get them in here, like the, like you said, we just need to get the show on the road, thank you.
Why is this ordinance holding up his project?
The AHRC and the DRC, all those things are still in place, the plans, so, help us understand why development can't move forward.
While Lee comes up, you know, and he'll, he'll reiterate what I think he's feeling with the people, that he's, he's attracted some world-class folks who have interest in.
Mr. Mayor, I agree, with all due respect.
Let me say, let me say this before he takes this, is that, that the key thing, and Lee, you agree with me or not, but the box billings got to go, number one, it's, it's the highest priority of anything that, that will, will kick off downtown, I believe, and I, I think, you know, any, any day that we, we kind of delay, it's hurting the cause, but Lee and his group have been tremendous to work with, and we, and we're just trying to make sure that he feels the same about us, and, and I think this, the overlay is gonna streamline what we need to do, and that's, that's why we're doing, that's the good faith that I think we're trying to put before any developer for this, for this downtown revitalization.
First of all, Mr. Deming, I totally respect where you're coming from, with regard to the words that were taken out, shall, will, whatever, that have some kind of, certainly a significant legal ramification, if you will, I think the, the overall purpose of this, my understanding anyway, was to create this general overlay, overview of what we, I think the council, the mayor, everybody in the city wants to sort of see happen in downtown, so, be respectful of not necessarily hamstringing any other developer from coming in and petitioning, my understanding was, it was to give more or less a recommendation of what everybody wanted this to look like, so that as other developers, or I'm dealing with, for instance, Pat O'Briens, or somebody of that nature, they know what to expect from the city, in terms of what other businesses they're gonna let, what generally they're looking for to come downtown, and what they expect those to look like, certainly, everybody's gonna, every business that comes in, that we would seek to bring in, is gonna have to have their plans approved, and at any point, I think along this process, if something's not right with regard to this overlay project, it can come back and be amended before you guys, having this passed, and as I say, as we meet with these people, everybody wants to know, well, what possibly could come in next door to us, or what, what are some of the specifics of what other businesses may or may not look like or operate there, this gives us some certainty to approach businesses and give them, allay any fears that they have that, you know, somebody may do something off the wall, even though we know you guys are not gonna let that, or y'all are safeguarding the city as well, and I think that's the general impetus by this, and I certainly don't want you guys to feel, at least that I'm rushing you, or that I'm, I'm pushing, I'm here to support the mayor, I'm here to support you guys, and I'm here to support my development, and I don't, I sometimes feel like I'm caught in a, in a tussle, and I don't think anybody really wants to be in a tussle, I think it's maybe, maybe more of an administrative feeling, is what I'm, as I'm listening to everybody and their comments back here, it seems to be more of an administrative-type process that's going on here, and we just wanna make everybody happy, and, but we certainly want some, an ability to, as we go out and meet with these potential clients that we're trying to bring here, to allay any fears that they have that, you know, things won't look like what everybody wants them to look like at the end of the day, and I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Lee, I agree with you, and, and I think we're all caught in the same tussle, because while we wanna look like we are supporting your development, because we all do, and we want it to happen, we also have to remember that we're also protecting and supporting the developer of tomorrow as well, and so, when I look through this, and I see those terms, this is gonna be codified into perpetuity, I mean, that means the next mayor, the next council, the next body that's gonna be ordained the authority to approve this stuff, may not have the same vision, they may not understand that, and, and that's what I'm concerned with, I want to see something that's more definitive in here, so we actually tell these people what is expected, if it's just gonna be what's encouraged, then we don't need to codify this, we just need to streamline and say there's no AHRC, or no DRC requirements for this area, or something, in, to that nature, but in order to make sure that the developments do come in, and they're not subject to having plans changed numerous times, like I've talked to numerous developers, not you, with regard to your project, but they've come before this administration, or the prior administration, with plan after plan after plan, because the terms in the LDO weren't specific and clear, and the administrations had the authority to nitpick those plans and approve or deny them, because there were no specific requirements or denials, they were all subjective terms that added up to some test, qualifying test, some totality of all the circumstances, and while this business did this, they got their permit, this business did this, but they failed to do this, which this one did, and they didn't get their permit, I would rather see some consistency, and why we have the opportunity to do that, seven days to ensure that type of consistency for future developers, I think that's, that's not just prudent, but that's responsible and important, and I think we should do that, if, if putting shovels in the ground on your project isn't gonna be held up by seven days, I would ask you to, to not hold it against us if we wait seven more days.
You guys have been overwhelmingly supportive and helpful through this whole process, I think, like I said, there are no hard and fast rules, which I think you have an issue with here, and I see it as more of a, this is a blueprint for what everybody here wants to see happen in downtown, and so, that being said, I don't see the problem with going forward, but I respect your opinion and why you don't necessarily wanna go forward.
Mr. President, let me jump in, too, and Lee, I'm gonna take words out of your mouth, but I think what we don't wanna see is a anything goes kind of deal, and that's what we're trying to do.
That's actually what I'm worried about, because I disagree with you, I don't think this is a blueprint, blueprints have defined plans, none of this is defined, it's all encouraged or should, there's nothing that says you must do this, or you can't do this, it's all, well, you should do this, and you should do this, and you should do this, and at the end of the day, this group will determine if we're gonna approve it or not, that's the problem I have with it.
And I'm worried when we get into more specifics of telling somebody what they can or can't do specifically, that it may discourage some aspects, now, it would depend on what the, certainly what, what point in there was being discussed, but it may have the detrimental effect in talking to some of these people, if it was already in a, you'd have to come in and get an exception to it in order to.
Well, I agree, so on the other hand, you have that same concern, that if it's all subjective, every developer that comes in and wants to put, doesn't wanna put in an ALCO or something, and they get denied a, a permit, then we have to hear an appeal on every single one of these issues, and there is no definitive certainty for it, and I'm with you, I'd rather take out all of this, but then you have that problem, like you said, with what could come in next to us, while this doesn't disqualify any type of business from coming in, the type of development itself in the area, the market will determine what businesses come in, no lawyer's gonna take an office in there when, when property or land rents are gonna be so high that it doesn't make it reasonable for me to do that when I could do it much cheaper somewhere else, so the marketplace will determine what comes in, and what goes, what does not develop in there, but that's my concern, my concern is there is nothing that says you can or can't do this, and it's gonna muddy the water all the way through the process, I think a week to try to clear up some of this, I think is, like I said, reasonable and prudent, and again, I hope that doesn't deter your development.
No, all I'm saying, we have, we've been asked to participate in the workshops and provide our comments, as from a developer's standpoint, and we've done that, we've provided our comments, and we are good to go with how it stands right now, it is the wisdom, obviously, of the city council and the mayor of how you guys wanna proceed on this, and so.
Lee, your development meets all of the encouragements already, so, it, you obviously should wanna move forward, and I would, I mean, that's, that, that is what, that's the nature of your business.
Mr. President.
That's the nature of your business.
I'd like to say something.
Mr. Lawrence?
This, this, to me, is a problem, for you people that haven't been around, this city failed in 1972, that's 47 years ago, we've been in total distress, so what we're trying to do here is make it better, you stepping up to the plate is awesome, Fofa pushing the things, awesome, the city council wants the city to make it, so that's all, 47 years of failure, one week is not gonna kill anything, let's do it the right way the first time, and take care of business, and go on.
Thank you, thank you very much.
The motion's on the table, it was seconded by Lawrence, I'll call for the question, all in favor of tabling until April 2nd, please signal with a raise your hand.
I'll, I'll vote, just as long as everybody that's opposed will guarantee that anything they have with this, any issues they have with this, is in writing, so that it can be amended by next Tuesday.
I think, I think we're all in agreeance that next Tuesday it will be up for vote.
All right, I'll vote with you.
Motion carries, the resolution will be tabled until April 2nd, excuse me, that ordinance, I corrected, it's ordinance.
Robert, Robert, do you want us to bring this stuff to you and you?
Yes.
You wanna just, if we have anything we wanna say, don't do this, or don't do that, just bring it to you?
That's fine, I'll just compile it all together. We'll move on to Resolution E.
Resolution for final subdivision plot approval for Elsie Place subdivision phase two.
Move it.
We've got a motion by Councilman Glavin.
Second.
Second by Paul Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I'd just like to let everybody know this project is
I'd just like to let everybody know this project is a pretty significant project. This is the property that runs along Walmart, fronts Pops Ferry Road, goes along Elsie, there'll be a big green space and a retention pond in the front, followed by residential lots, followed by mixed use and commercial, and it really, really opens up this corridor. I can't wait to get it developed.
Discussion, Paul Tisdale?
Yeah, my only comment, I've never seen or never heard of a replat, of a replat, of a replat, and I thought maybe that was just a copy and paste error, but.
Counselor, if we could try to simplify that, I called Nathan Williams, and asked him if there was a way we could reorder that to make it simple, and he said no. What that does is a signal to anyone doing a title search or anything, that they have to go and understand back into the research board to go back to the beginning. Does that satisfy you?
It does, I'm, first time today I've been satisfied.
Further discussion on Resolution E?
Over the question.
There being none, all in favor? Passed unanimously. We note for the record that Nathan Barrett was not in the room. Move forward to Resolution F.
Resolution to grant minor subdivision plot approval for property identified as 14066 Wanawitz Road.
He wants to move it?
Do I have a motion on Resolution F?
Is he coming back in? Let's watch out.
We're waiting for the return of Mr. Barrett. I think we need some music, so whoever's transcribing this doesn't know.
Pass at three oh right now.
We don't have, oh, you go.
Four oh, you go.
Yeah.
Let it rip.
Oh, we're gonna give him the respect since it's Ward seven. I have a feeling he's, he's gonna support this.
Them two left the meeting for good, or why are they coming back?
Send a search.
Nah, leave it. I don't wanna miss anything.
A search party for the search party. Alright, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept a motion for, for, uh, moved by Paul Tisdale.
Some move.
Seconded by Dixie Newman. Any discussion?
Where'd those guys go? Alright, call for the question.
These are all approvals by the.
There being no discussion, we'll vote on Resolution F, all in favor? Signal with the, raise your hand. Motion passes four to zero. Let it be known that Nathan Barrett and Kenny Glavin were both out of the room. Resolution G.
Resolution to grant minor subdivision final plot approval for the property located at 1751 Pops Ferry Road.
Do I have a motion?
That's Kenny's.
So moved by George Lawrence, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul Tisdale. Any discussion on the resolution to grant minor subdivision of plot for approval for certain defined property currently identified as 1751 Pops Ferry Road introduced by, in Ward six? I just wanna get all that out, so he knew we were talking about his, you know. Discussion, Mr. Glavin?
Okay, what are we talking about here? I just walked in, I just walked in.
It's G, y'all walked, second, G.
Alright, I have no discussion, I ask y'all to approve it.
Any discussion on the council?
I said.
There being none, I recall for the question. Those in favor for G, please signal with the raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Move to Resolution H.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for the establishment of a bank with a drive-through for the property located at 725 Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale, discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
No discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add.
Discussion on the council? There being none, I call for the question. All in favor of Resolution H, please signal with the raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Resolution I has been removed, we'll move to Resolution J.
Resolution supporting the Howard Avenue redevelopment project.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Paul Tisdale, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, reluctantly by Kenny Glavin. Discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
All we're doing is establishing this entertainment, mixed-use entertainment zone. Uh, as noted, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, uh, on the, on the north, I think, on the east by Main Street, on the south by Water Street, and the west by Raynor Street, that encompasses, correct me if I'm wrong, that encompasses basically the downtown redevelopment card, or whatever. Uh, I think we oughta move forward with it, and that's it, thank you.
Any further discussion on the council?
Nothing to add.
All in favor, please signal with the raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, this brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Sec, moved by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Dixie Newman. I'm gonna begin on my left-hand side with Councilman Lawrence, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss?
The only thing I'd like to make sure on, uh, option eight, that's the insurance, is option two, that's we pass, on insurance. Option two.
The council's gotta make a decision here whether option one or option two is chosen, and if option two is chosen, then we have to redo the resolution.
I wanna make sure that we vote for, no, option two is the one that saves us the nineteen thousand dollars, actually, saved seventy-five thousand dollars.
Could you give us a rundown of, of option one versus option two?
We can amend the, uh, resolution.
Right here.
Right here, right now?
Correct. No, no holdup.
Sorry, Mr. Demme, your question?
Uh, give us a rundown on the difference between option one and option two.
The only difference is the elimination of the flood sublimit that is excess of the NFIP, of five million dollars.
How does that impact, um, one, our risk aversion, um, and the bottom line with the exception of the money difference that we see here? I mean, what is, what's the impact if we were to sustain damage this storm season?
You'd be limited to the NFIP, and so for a commercial building, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for, um, the building, five hundred thousand dollars for the contents, um, and we do have flood policies on, um, our buildings that are, are in A and B zones, some that are in X zones that were required by FEMA.
And the new BFEs?
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, so we are actually, I mean, with, taking option one and removing that extra five, removing that five million dollars of, of, uh, coverage, we are still adequately covered, in your opinion?
I don't, I would, I never recommend to anybody to, um, eliminate any coverage. I mean, that wouldn't be, I mean, you're, you're asking me to cover the, the, you know, the what-ifs, and so, I can never say that we will not have a flood, you know?
And, and that's not, obviously, not what I'm getting at, and what I, what I mean is, if there is a flood.
Yes, sir.
With your experience, based off the valuation of our assets, what is our exposure?
Currently, since Hurricane Katrina, and, uh, the administration, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we've had a single flood event, um, and that is the Harbor Masters Building in, in, on the point, and that damage, uh, didn't exceed the NFIP at the time. Are the FEMA maps wrong? And, and we, all of our new structures are built above, uh, the, the current BFEs, uh, that we've built in the city, the other buildings that we have, obviously, this building, a few others, already exceeded what the, the FEMA flood maps have asked for, so if you're looking at the lighthouse and that one structure, um, is my opinion that the city has, has mitigated much of their, um, potential for loss for flood compared to prior to Katrina. Prior to Katrina, we did have a substantial, uh, number of buildings that were well lower or in a location that, uh, were susceptible to flood. A lot of those higher-value buildings that we have, the safety center and some of those other, uh, have been mitigated, or, uh, fire department on the point was mitigated, and so, I can't say that they'll never flood, I'll say by the, the standards that were provided to us by the federal government, uh, of how we should build and at the elevations we should build, the city has taken those steps, um, since, in the last thirteen years. So, the risk that we had prior to Katrina isn't the same risk that we have today.
Okay, well, based solely off your recommendation, I'm gonna go, just kidding, I'm not using your recommendation. It's a bad joke, and I'm not a comedian. Alright.
Also, Robert.
I don't have any further discussion, do you, George?
Also, we, we went up from fifty million to seventy-five million dollar coverage, and we did bill everything to FEMA standard, so we all well protected in flood. I mean, completely, the building, like, public safety building, not gonna flood, had nothing to do with flood. There's a lot of building, you know, now you have to have fifty feet, you have fifty feet, you ain't have to town anyway. So I mean, you gotta be realistic here. This is giving away seventy-five thousand dollars, in other words, we should've probably stopped it two, three years ago. And like you said, next year, there's no guarantee they're gonna let us do this, so I don't see any sense, option two's the only one we should go with. Thank you.
And I will say that the National Flood Insurance Program reauthorization, there is a movement from our, our friends i- in Congress from Louisiana to increase, possibly increase the limits that we can buy through the federal government. So if there are some of those buildings that we want, if that were to pass, obviously, we can look at increasing some through the NFIP.
We had that discussion at the insurance meeting about looking at everything again next year, there's probably somebody building you oughta take off, something you oughta add on, we'll look at that over the year, when we get all the reporting, we'll do that job and take that, because like you said, it's possibly gonna go up four, five percent next year, can't stop that.
Yes, sir, I will, I will be at the budget hearings, and we'll be able to provide you with a very solid report at that time for next year.
Thank you. I still recommend option two. Paul, Kenny?
Yeah, no, I wanna thank Frank for meeting with you, the council insurance committee, uh, earlier this week and going over all of that, and, and he made good points, and I think it's, uh, based on what I heard, a good idea for you to be at the budget hearings when we talk about this next year, it'll be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to also say, we, we met, not actually just last week, we met, uh, you know, a few times before last week, and taking a very serious look at all our buildings that we have coverage. We took, in fact, at the last meeting, we looked at literally hundreds of our, our buildings and structures, and what each coverage was on each one of those buildings, and we arrived at option two, we asked Frank to create option two, to present to the council, uh, as the best and most efficient option, in our opinion. Uh, we could keep the extra coverage, of course, and, uh, but like Mr. Bordeaux reported earlier, it's within the limits. So if we reach the limits within our coverage of wind and, and other insurance coverages, it, it won't, it, it's not an extra five million necessarily.
Correct, that's a very important point.
It could be an extra half a million, it could be zero, it, you know, or it could be the, the whole five million if we only, uh, reached seventy thou, uh, seventy million, uh, in total coverage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, again, thank y'all, and, uh, you know, we worked hard on this, and I thank you for your, your expertise.
Thank you.
I had, could I report one more thing from the meeting yesterday? Kenny, Kenny introduced us to the secret luncheon special at Margaritaville. Get this now, for four dollars, and they, we all ate it. You get a ton of broccoli, about six, seven strips and chicken strips, and a thing of mashed potato, four dollars, four dollars. So all three of them ate for twelve dollars.
It's not a secret anymore, Councilman, now come on now.
Sounds like I need to join the insurance committee. Mr. Lawrence, do we have any other concerns for you on the, on the consent agenda?
Yeah, on M, exactly what you're monitoring, why are we monitoring the walkover?
That's M?
M, excuse me, M.
As of tomorrow, it's gonna be ours.
Say again?
As of tomorrow, it's gonna be ours.
We responsible for the walkover?
Absolutely.
That belongs to the, the Bowe Rides, was built for the Bowe Rides, why are we responsible for it?
The council approved an MOU long before it was built, saying that we would take over management and maintenance of it.
I'm against that, then. What is it gonna cost us to monitor something we don't own?
It's gonna cost us, for starters, the insurance, I mean, uh, maintenance contract for the elevators.
Say that again?
Maintenance contract for the elevators, and maintenance contract for fire alarm, maintenance contract for monitoring, uh, all of those things. Now, those are all under warranty this first year, so you're not gonna see those costs yet, it'll be in the next budget year.
How much money did it cost the city, that walkover?
Well, the MOU, we didn't just make it up, it was approved over a year and a half ago.
I'm asking a question, how much money did it cost the city? I didn't ask you about a year ago. How much money did it cost the city? Do we, how much we put up?
We put up four hundred thousand dollars, but we had been paid that four hundred thousand dollars a couple of budget years before that, and we just spent it on something else, so we had to handy up another four hundred. The, the answer is, it didn't cost us anything, it was all part, paid for by MDA, as part of the stadium deal, and the parking garage.
But we didn't build it in the stadium, it was six million, that was always my problem with that. That was part of the original contract, but it's done now.
Three days' pay.
It's just another expense for the city.
Correct.
It's about time for the Bowe Rides to start spending some money, not us. Thank you. I got one more, too. I have one, one more. The laughing, uh, on the CDBG money?
It's item S.
It's S.
Sierra.
I mean, I, I can't support that. I'm not putting up a hundred thousand dollars for side grants, I don't think that's the purpose of that money, and I just can't support just putting that into something else. A lot of problems y'all have with this money, this is federal money, it's tough money to deal with, and I ain't gonna do anything I don't think's that's wrong with that, so I just can't support that at all. Just my personal opinion, thank you.
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion that we amend it to include option two.
Well, alright, well, there's a motion on the table to amend five A to accept option two, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's moved by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Paul Tisdale, let's discuss this. Mr. Glavin?
I, we discussed it, we, we said we met, we looked at all the options, we felt that taking the excess, uh, limit, uh, off of it would save us considerable amount of money. Uh, the, the committee will continue, uh, to deliberate and look at all these buildings, like Mr. Lawrence said, there may be some that we take some of the flood coverage completely off, and we may, depending on how the, we're expecting, uh, possibly a fifteen percent increase in insurance rates next year, possibly, that's what all the statistics are telling us, so we, we may even have to look at deductibles to kinda manage that cost, you know, to fit in our budget, and, um, but I think we talked about it, and that's, that's the reason we're, we're proposing option two.
Uh, Mr. Glavin said it very well, I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Leonard, uh, your position on this?
We support the, uh, the option two.
Okay, with, any other discussion?
I, uh, after you vote on that one, I'd, I'd love to be asked a question about five J.
Five J, we'll return to five J in one moment, Mr. Leonard. There's a, a motion on the table to amend five A by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Paul Tisdale, with no more discussion, all in favor of amending five A, please signal with the raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, five A is amended. Mr. Leonard, you had a comment for five J?
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. Uh, this, this one, uh, is just, I don't know that any of you have heard about this before, but, uh, I'm gonna show you first a picture of the, the last, that's the, uh, area at the port where the pedestrian crosswalk is going across. You'll see there's a, a marker on there that tells you the location of a monument that's gonna be placed there. The next picture is an overhead of the same area, again, showing the spot down on just where the pedestrian crosswalk is gonna come across, the site that's been proposed for this monument. And the last picture, I think, shows the actual monument. This is a, a monument called Gold Star Families Monument. Gold Star Families have monuments in about thirty states right now. Gold Star Families have monuments in about thirty states right now, and they've chosen Biloxi as the monument for the state of Mississippi. Uh, Gold Star Families are families that have lost, uh, a loved one in a, uh, in, in combat. So, um, a Medal of Honor winner named Woody Williams has started a foundation to put one of these in every state, and that Medal, that Woody Williams Medal of Honor, uh, Gold Star Family Monument is gonna be, they've asked the city of Biloxi to take it. No cost to the city. Only cost to the city will be perpetual care of a concrete slab and a granite monument. So, I don't see that as being a big impact, and I think it's pretty cool that they chose Biloxi to put this monument.
I, I think it's very cool. Um, I don't know who Herschel Woody Williams is, do you?
I, I would be, I was surprised when I asked if we had any Gold Star Families in Biloxi and on the Gulf Coast, and I was told there were quite a few.
Really? Interesting.
Anyway, I just wanted to share that with the, the public and the council.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Tisdale, do you have anything on the consent agenda?
Not a thing.
Mr. Glavin?
Nope.
Nathan, Mr. Barrett. And I have nothing further, so we'll call for the question for the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything that anyone is opposed to?
Yeah, I'm opposed to S.
S?
S.
The record reflect that George Lawrence has voted in opposition to consent agenda, item S. We will move to section six, code enforcement hearings.
None.
We will move to section seven, routine agenda.
Motion.
Got him? Huh?
We can do that after the routine agenda.
Say what?
We could do that after the routine agenda. We just won't move to, do I have a second for the routine agenda?
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by George Lawrence. Discussion?
Where the, where the money people out there hiding? Call, give us an update here. Give us some good news for the train. You've been telling us this the last two weeks. You know that.
Yeah, a little background, Councilman. We, uh, we had a million plus ready, ready to come to us, and one of the low-level staff people in MEMA decided to, that they couldn't pay us for any more, um, work since it was, uh, we were past the, uh, end of the contract completion date. That's false thinking, and we, uh, had a discussion with MEMA last night about that, and they've corrected that thinking by that low-level staff member, and, uh, will now be paid that money that was due us.
So, it's gonna be delayed?
So, we're technically, you know, technically, we're, they were saying we're past the date when the contract was supposed to be finished, and therefore, we, they couldn't pay us, which is silly. Reminded them that they may be past the date. We're doing liquidated damages. We're not, we're not, we're only collecting for the, the full amount less liquidated damages. We'll only bill those after the fact. And, uh, so there was no reason for them to not continue paying us. So, anyway, that just, that's why we're missing a week or two here.
So, that's why we hadn't received anything the last couple of weeks?
Hung up in the staff there and Jackson.
Alright, thank you.
Some move. A second.
And a second by Paul Tisdale to go into closed session for the purpose of examining the session of Lawrence's executive session to discuss, uh, riverboat tax appeal. All in favor?
Some move.
Nathan, I miss your vote. Are you for? Councilman Glavin, uh, um, excuse me, Councilman Lawrence, Newman, Tisdale, and Barrett for, or are you against? Do I have a motion to conclude the closed session and reconvene or no convening?
Some move.
Got a motion by George Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Same vote as the last, four-four. Robert Demme against. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Against four-one. Is that it? That's it. We're in executive session.